Let's go ahead and call this being ordered. It's Tuesday, February 23rd, 9:00 AM. Minister reports will be compiled.
None.
Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings, events.
Solid Waste Management District Board meeting tomorrow. Leadership Friday. And the Senate Task Force meeting Friday. That's all the official stuff. I want to hear about bowling, fish fries, spaghetti dinner.
Fish fries have been doing really well.
It's good.
Really?
All right, I'll get them. Wow. Hey, by the way, they asked where you were at Friday. I knew you was at the Knights Columbus, said there were fish fries. I told them you were showing them. Are you thinking about coming somewhere else?
Unless my counsel flies.
I don't know.
I heard you guys made a nice contribution there to bring fish over to the home show.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Those good fish, too. You should have been there.
You got it done. We've got a road and bridge advisory meeting on Thursday at 8:00 AM.
Lions tomorrow, Thursday, Missouri National Guard Capitol. Monday is the Federal Reserve Lunch at Double Creek. That's about it, so. Okay, let's go ahead, signing of the 2016-2017 Highway Safety Grant. HMV enforcement.
This is a grant application for the HMV. It's the same as last year that we're requesting. It's for overtime reimbursement, fringe benefits reimbursement, fuel reimbursement.
The HMV standpoint.
How does this move vehicles?
Just an application or?
Yes.
All right, I'm pretty good at this now.
So do we spend the money and then we ask for the grant or do we just get a grant and then we can have the overtime?
Once the grant is approved, it will go into effect on October 1st and then we spend the money and we get reimbursement.
Okay, so we haven't spent it yet, it's not reimbursing for money we've spent, it's we'll have the overtime.
After October 1st.
Once it's granted.
We can't get used grant money after the fact because that's what's called supplanting of money that we've already spent, so all, and that's how all of them work. It has to be in addition to what you're currently spending. Just everybody knows.
We do have one for the period that we're in right now.
I move that we sign the 1617 Highway Safety Grant application for HMV enforcement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of the 2016-2017 Highway Safety Grant DWI enforcement.
This one is also for overtime and fringe benefits and fuel reimbursement. It's also requesting our LEPC, no. The complex that they go to.
Let's say.
Let's say. All right. The Let's Say meeting that they go to, we've asked for reimbursement for that. We got it this year, so we're asking for it again for next year. We're not requesting sobriety check points. We have to pass.
I move that we sign the 2016-17 Highway Safety Grant application for the WI enforcement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that one all three, so we'll have to sign one of the forms there.
You don't need to check for much, I got this on Facebook that there's going to be checkpoints out this weekend. I'm not kidding, because a lot of times y'all aren't even at the checkpoint, it's already all over Facebook. Somehow people find out, so just put there's going to be a checkpoint, park a white car out there.
Okay, amend contract for DHSS, Show Me Healthy Women.
Is that one, not this one?
Sorry, I don't have a place for all of those to sign here.
Good morning. This is just an amendment to current contract we have. We get reimbursed on legacy convenience of this greeting services, name grants and things like that. I don't know, because more people have insurance, we're just not getting as many people using the services, so DHSS wants to lessen our contract so they can give it to other people or use it for other brokers that need the money. Doesn't really affect our day-to-day business because our numbers are really low.
Can I go and get that?
Move that we sign the amendment, amended contract for DHSS, Show Me Healthy Women.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we'll skip, we'll move the middle works down and accounts payable, are you?
I'd ask for a little account payable for some of the utilities and the P cards are up there.
Second.
I didn't make, I said, give me a second.
Oh.
Now you're trying to move along quicker than I wanted, so.
You did say give me a second.
He did what I told him to do.
We're still recording these, right? I'm going, this, I'm going to see if this goes viral on YouTube. Sam will be viral on something or nothing. You know what YouTube is? It's not like snow tubing, TV thing. You do?
It's a cartoon channel.
Cartoon channel?
On Saturday morning, yeah. Got to get up real early though. I favor that we free our accounts payable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we're going to go down to the health department and discuss pest management.
Well, as you know, we've been working with public works to develop a new integrated pest management policy. Different municipalities would request for them to come spray or we would get complaints, and we wanted a more integrated approach that included larvicides and spraying to address the mosquito issue. So we started with CDC's policy and adapted it for our use. And we also, like when Zika came up there, I said, well, do we need to include Zika? And, you know, I started thinking about it, it's like, well, from what I've heard, one of the species of mosquitoes couldn't survive in our climate here in Missouri, the other one, they don't know for sure, and then it's like, well, if we do it for West Nile and for Zika, well, next year it might be something else. So let's just make it more broad and talk about all vector-borne disease that is transmitted through mosquitoes. So we made it more broader and kind of took out as much reference to West Nile virus and Zika, just talked about vector-borne disease, because that's what we're really trying to address. So we have our draft policy, I think I sent it to you guys via email, but here's, do you want to copy? It's two-sided.
Is this what y'all emailed us?
Yes.
Just talking, that's what I'm trying to find here.
It's not marked draft, but it is a draft, and we are still open to comment, but we feel like this addresses the complacent concerns that we get from citizens, but really puts science aside behind why we're spraying, why we're doing larvicides. You know, we're going to monitor human cases, we're going to monitor those simone cases and forces and birds and things like that, to try to address the problem and have a more systematic approach to our treatment policy. And from what I've heard from public work, they are also looking for alternatives to some of those spray chemicals to see if there's anything that is more organic than what we have now.
The companies we currently deal with, doesn't offer them, but I think the company that sets up our foggers, their sprayer.
Our best, the company that previously, sorry, not used to this, first time, first time caller. Company that we designed or helped design our vegetation sprayer, we've been contacting recently trying to, it's an old piece of equipment, we're considering upgrading it so we can have a more specific chemical mix on there to not be, so in your case, if we're talking about broad, we're trying to narrow some things we do chemical-wise on the vegetation side. I talked to him about some chemicals and he brought up that they had one that was for mosquitoes that was organic, and my experience with personal use on several organic things is some of these companies kind of prey on your concerns about using chemicals and make a lot of money off something that doesn't really work. Other things may work. What I've found so far, after talking to a few people that have used it, not a lot of results. I have no idea about this other chemical that we're checking into, not chemical, but it's a garlic and some kind of extract, I don't remember what else in it. It is supposed to run through the foggers, don't have a clue whether or not it works, haven't got any information on it yet, but it's things we're checking into, trying to find something that actually does work for the money spent. Kind of waiting on some information right now on it, and something we've just started checking into, have checked on whether or not certain states, like California's pretty strict with their regulations, we're also trying to find things, their specs, hoping that it's a more public-friendly chemical, but that's where we are right now in the chemical end.
So basically, we have not made a decision what we're going to be using.
We've got chemicals from last year that we've already purchased, and I try to rotate those things in and out as I go throughout the year. I was going to start this year with this chemical unless I'm told to do otherwise, and use it up, and what if we get into the next round, once this is gone is, I guess, what we're waiting to find out, what we want to use or what we can find that is money intelligently spent on a product that works.
Well, I also want to point out, the chemical that we use right now is not harmful to the people that are around it for the amount that they are around it. Like, it has the value that is, the value of part of higher dose that's in there, the time, the time weighted average is an exposure that would be for 10 hours of a workday during a 40-hour work week, so the people in the communities are not exposed to that chemical enough to cause any adverse effects.
I'd also add that the tanks on our foggers are black, they hold the chemical, they have to be, if it allows sunlight through, it becomes inert, so once this chemical is exposed to sunlight for an hour or two, its ability to do anything is open, it's basically nothing. So a few, couple of hours of sunlight and, actually probably not even that long, but just a short time of sunlight and its killing power is completely gone. And that's how come we, our tanks have to be black, because if it's on there and you're driving around with the chemical left in it, and sun gets through and it gets a little light, it's, you've just lost 20 gallons of chemical and it's useless. You now have a little bit of mineral oil and that's all. So that's, it does go away very quickly, and that's with lower power close and with the rats running. But the other one is if we commonly use it up here, we'll tell you trade names, remember the name of all of them.
How do we determine what areas we're treating? Most of the time it's probably requests. I know we get a lot of requests from Elsate City area, was down there asking to come and fog there, same way with some smaller towns. We received requests last year from Russellville to the fogger area. So you say Elsate City, I mean, what is that? That's residents or? One of the residents down there along the river property. They have the gavins.
And that kind of originated from the flood of '93. After that, we started fogging Elsate City, and it just kind of kept, every year we kept doing it.
We've even had requests to go outside of the county, go onto the delta, and we have not done that.
So it's request-driven, so if you don't get a request, do we not, do we not fog?
Other than Elsate City and our county park, we usually, unless the health department gets a request from them, or they get a positive, we don't go in the areas.
So are we putting out traps and monitoring stuff?
They were, I don't know if you did last year, they did, they did a couple of years ago.
He's not great.
So Weston also prevalent, they were able to get grant money to where they were testing, and if they can get a positive on that, then we definitely hit that area pretty hard.
So do we get like a request from St. Barton's or Lord's Farm House or?
Have in the past, you know, have it for a couple of years, I believe, but.
And that's coming from the city?
Yeah.
Same way, like I said, with the issue out of Russellville, that was requested by the city, the city or council. So I mean, I, you know, coming from the city, I think that's a valid request from them. A little concerned that, you know, if one or two neighbors call from a certain subdivision outside the city limits, are we, are we going and doing it on that request?
That we won't do unless, we usually tell them to get ahold of the health department if they have concerns, and then we wait for them to tell us what, what they want us to do there.
And then we can talk to them about using deeper personal protection, making sure that they don't have standing water in their yard. There's a lot of other things they could do, they could get a bath house, you know, spraying is not the only answer.
We actually received some from subdivisions last year, and we didn't go out and fog just because, yeah, there was no reason to. We did go out for larvicide out.
Yeah, we do that in all of our subdivisions now on a regular basis, and we put them in the ambulance, which is actually, my personal opinion, it kills more mosquitoes that way than it does the other way.
Paula, would you like to say anything?
I'm Paula Dollinger from Russellville, and I'm here as a voice for all the Polk County families who are trying to protect their children from exposure to toxic them. So thank you for taking community comment on the plan, it looks really nice, a good quality plan. Now, there's a lot of good components in it, like monitoring the mosquitoes that carry disease, working with the community to eliminate backyard habitat, and targeting the larval mosquitoes, that's a big one that I know is strong, is in the low-risk category, so hopefully we can target them at their source, which is the most effective way to reduce mosquitoes. So I have three concerns about the draft. First of all, the way it's written, the county can continue to spray whenever there's just complaints, because there's always a history of vector-borne disease in the past, so two of the definitions are always going to be met, and so basically they can spray at a low-risk category. However, the CDC recommendation that they reference for, you know, making the plan, does not have spraying at the low-risk category. So I would recommend that we could maybe follow the CDC's recommendation for a year and see if we get adequate results that way, without spraying, if there's low risk, because with larvicides at the low risk, I think you're going to see a much better result. So that would be my first recommendation, is to use what the CDC recommended and see if it works, because spraying does have its own risks. So when you, let's see here. So my second request is that if we could have advanced notice of spraying, it would be very much appreciated. Other municipalities are doing it, just like if you're deciding on a Tuesday what the risk is, you just maybe put it on the website. Some places have hotlines where people like me who are interns, they could call in and just know when to expect it. And that way I can close my windows and turn off the AC, bring my pets and children inside, and even cover up my garden, actually. But mostly just the windows, because I'm right on the road and, you know, people are getting it in their homes. So the thing of notice would be a huge courtesy, and I don't think it would cost anything. And then lastly, you know, I appreciate that there was some discussion about organic pesticides. I think it is the way to go, of course effective ones, but, you know, they're going to cost a little bit more upfront, but, you know, when you think about long-term health risks and costs, there was a National Geographic study last year that I included with your last packet, that just shows astronomical costs associated with pesticide exposure. And even though you say it's gone, it really doesn't, it breaks down into other compounds, and it is in the soil, and it does have risks. I mean, the portuguese is, you know, proposed for a ban, as we know, and it's probably on a really good special right now, because everybody's probably trying to sell out of it, but that one has a long-term, all kinds of studies on it, on, you know, neurological effects. And the mosquito mist one, you know, hasn't even been tested for a long-term repeated exposure. So I do, you know, there's safer alternatives, I know Clark is one that has organic pesticide lines, you know, that are, I think if we could just focus on the least toxic, that would be a huge advance, you know, on overall human impact and non-target insects, because if we're, you know, if we're trying to take care of the environment, you know, that's something to take into consideration, our pollinators and birds and such, so. So thank you for putting the plans together, I certainly appreciate all the effort, I think it's been great, great progress, and I just hope it gets better and better. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Paula, we did hear from several residents, including yourself, you know, in regards to the vegetation spray, so what are the citizens of Russellville doing to control your mosquito population?
I don't know, you know, I concluded that map last time, there's like 12 ponds just right around us, and, you know, that's suspect to me, I think, because we do have bad mosquitoes. So I think if we focused on the ponds, and then also even, you know, even my gutters being cooked out, I think if we could help the older folks with that kind of stuff, it is a project that a lot of people, and I think gutters are a big suspect in our town, but, you know, community education and especially the larvicides. And there are bio-larvicides, and I think those are better for like the aquatic environment and the pollinators, they're not perfect, I think the butterflies maybe hit, but overall it's, totally they're quite effective, too.
Yes, ultimately, if we treated all the standing water there, everything that drank water would be hit with that.
The low water?
Well, any standing water, so what drinks standing water, birds, you know, everything that around is going to drink that water, you know, so.
And the bio-larvicides are safe or non-targeted animals and insects except the butterfly.
Sure.
But, you know, you're going to be killing thousands and thousands and thousands of mosquitoes at their source, you know, even enabling maybe the owners, maybe if they can afford them to cocker them and cuss their, help them and help themselves. It is, when you look at the map, I mean, it is right around.
Right. We got a huge county that we got to make policies for and try to do things, and so, you know, we need the help of residents in Russellville to help control the population.
Right, and it's our responsibility.
Yeah, so, you know, we'll try to work with you as much as we can, but.
And nuisance mosquitoes are one thing, I mean, we live in Missouri, we're gonna have mosquitoes, but it's the disease that is the public issue, I think, you know, so we're not really just trying to keep people comfortable, orange shirt, you know, they can spray themselves, but, you know, it's the disease that we really should aim at, and that's why I'm glad that that's a consideration for, for using the spray, but at the low risk, it's just a constant, we're always at low risk, the way it's written, because the CDC has it written different. It'd be nice if we could try it without spraying at the low risk.
Want to talk some about this?
Well, I was looking at.
You have to be the same, did it this way for a reason, it's just better?
Yeah, and I'm looking at CDC's policy, and in the low risk, it says, "Conduct integrated vector management program to monitor reduced vector mosquito abundance." So I was trying to figure out what they mean by reduced vector mosquito abundance, and some of that is applying locally, using pesticide to control adult and immature stages, so I'm not sure that in their low risk that they don't spray, but maybe it's more targeted areas, is it immature? Is it immature? No, it's immature, it's all mature and immature.
Yeah, and, you know, what's my three goals as a public health worker? Promote, prevent, and protect. So I need to prevent disease before it happens, that's why we vaccinate people, that's, you know, what we do, so part of me does not want to just be like, well, let's see what happens this year and not spray and see how many diseases we get, especially with new emerging diseases, you know, and vector-borne diseases like the Zika virus, I think we should do everything we can to prevent disease.
But if you're monitoring, and if you're monitoring the animal transmissions and stuff like that, that's going to be our predictor, you know, it can just always be, you know, know that's everything.
So what kind of notice do we have to give out before we spray for?
Well, I noticed on the plan, it said on Tuesdays, you're going to make a decision on the fifth level, so it sounds like that, and we'll put your plan together.
And with our new website, we'll be easily able to post that.
Yeah.
People will be able to sign up to those alerts for certain areas.
Yeah, we're having a new website, so we can send that email, or, you know, for how people sign up for you and whatnot.
I will say that the fogging, that's what you're discussing, notice the storm is fine. Weather plays a big role in whether or not it's worth going out. I don't want to fog with, I don't care what chemical it is, whether it's organic, I can pour on my Cheerios, or whether it's, you know, straight up something bad, I don't want to go out and throw away the taxpayer's dollar on a day that's too windy or foggy or something like that, because the molecules bind with the moisture in the air on a foggy day, you just wasted every dime, you know, my dollars you're paying me to go do it, plus the chemicals and the fuel. Same thing with the day that's too windy, I can, you know, go out, be halfway through it down, and most of the time my fog channels is long done. So, I mean, there's a, there's a time period where we may say we're going to go out on Tuesday evening or whatever in fog, typically we try to run Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. I don't like Monday, and I don't like Friday, too many people are out barbecuing and those kinds of things on the weekend, I don't want to interrupt that. So we try to get those three nights, one of those nights, weather permitting, it would be Tuesday, if we could do something like that, otherwise it would be whatever, I don't know how we'll address that, because just because we said we would, by the time we decide to go out, weather may have changed, so I mean.
But disclaimer, the disclaimer.
Well, not for that allergic, it'll come to you.
That would be a bit of a hit and miss to that, unfortunately.
We do our best with that, but it doesn't always work.
So with the new website and the alerts, it should be pretty accurate, so, hopefully.
Yep. Check our website, I think it's supposed to be up on around the 25th.
So you don't say any need in changing the plan? Just leave it as is? Kirsty, you prefer to leave it as is?
I think so.
I mean, we still have, we can make a decision whether we're fogging or not.
Yes.
Would it be a little more cautionary than in the past? I mean, I know that's the whole point of the draft, but, because, you know, it was just based on something, you know, it's what people are used to, and so they want it, but I think, you know, using caution would be prudent.
So I will tell you, Paul, probably the decision coming from Russellville is coming from complaints to the alderman and the mayor or whoever, so, you know, a lot of times, a lot of times you're only hearing the bad news as a elected person, so, you know. Well, so there's a lot of people complaining that mosquitoes are bad, although they're not hearing from the people that are saying the mosquito population isn't that bad, but, I mean, I don't know that we're going to monitor in Russellville, are we?
No, well, we get data from the entire county.
So there's somebody in Russellville that's monitoring that?
Well, like, disease data comes from the entire county. We can look by address or if we get any kind of case, we'll check where that's from. So the disease data, we will know where they live.
Yeah, there's no one monitoring mosquito.
Right. Yeah, we don't have the grant to monitor.
We don't have the funds to bill them actually do mosquito monitoring, traffic.
We need grants.
Or you're just going to submit a budget, I guess. I guess my question to the commission, how do you want to handle one? We do get a request, since we're not monitoring, we get a request from a town that they want to be fogged, you know, from the city council.
They have to vote on it?
There's a question. Why not?
The chair of the cities and the C O A adopt our, after.
Well, since we're doing the spraying, I think that we'll be able to make those recommendations. And if you get a complaint from one of those jurisdictions, they could call us and say, do we have any evidence of disease in the area?
Well, we don't get complaints. They just call and.
Want you to spray.
Yeah, they just say, can you come fog our municipality? That's what we get.
But I think at that point, we could say, well, we're not showing us, you know, any history of disease in the area. You know, at this point, we would prefer not to spray.
That's why I want the.
Yeah, that's why we need to put back on that.
That's why I want the direction is that they say, we don't care. We want the city fog.
We make them adopt all our other ordinances anytime we do any other inspections, so I don't see this as being any different.
Okay, well, we can send it out to them.
Yeah, that's just, I mean, that's just.
Right, and we can let them know that we're not just going to come out every time they have a complaint about mosquito. We want to see some evidence that the spraying is really needed.
Well, therein lies what Chris was talking about is they need to take proactive steps and try to mitigate this stuff rather than saying, hey, we got a bunch of mosquitoes, come spray because it's a lot easier. I, I mean, I know more about this stuff than I knew before, than I wanted to know, and it's, I mean, obviously it's moderately toxic and they banned it for home use, but how long have they been trying to ban it for insecticide use? Has this been going on? Last time we talked about it, they were still talking about it. It's really popped up for the last year and a half that they've really started talking about banning it. So.
You might get a lot of our towns right before the parish picnic, say, hey, come fog it just so we, you know, we got a lot.
I think even the state of Florida, they don't even fog Florida where there are a lot of mosquitoes unless they have a hurricane or something like that goes over. It's letting a lot of fresh water out into their thing, but they have a lot of standing water. They don't, I don't like it. They don't even use much fogging there. They're larva style a lot of stuff.
I was going to say.
But they don't do.
They're doing something that you're, because I just wrote an article about it, they use their character.
There are areas where they've had hurricanes.
Might really get just. Sorry, we addressed.
So how about we set a package together, this seems to be the policy, and then also talks about the things that they can do in their area to reduce the mosquito habitat. It also offers for us to come out and speak at our city council meetings if needed, but kind of saying, this is what we're going to do this summer, so you need to be proactive and then if needed, we will come out and do that. Would that be okay? I've sent it to you guys.
Right, and I think it needs to maybe go a step further. We need to somehow monitor those populations of mosquitoes or whatever. I don't know how that's done, so it's not cheap. So that's why, that's why we've never done it in-house. I'm not saying that we do it. I'm saying that, you know, if Russellville wants to do it or something, but there needs to be, there needs to be some reason why we're coming out there. I mean, I just can't say, I just can't go out my, you know, I'm out in Russellville at the city park and I can't say, well, you're eating alive, you need to come spray. That's not necessarily good enough, but, so, but I do think that they need, you know, I'm not just talking about Russellville. I think everybody needs to take an active role in reducing mosquito population on your property and surrounding properties and talking to your neighbors, but how do we know if there's an actual problem? That we monitor or do something?
What kind of grant do you need? Do you know what grant?
Um, I can call, I've, you know, the state public health that Marion and the person, Karen, that the state is, is off. The state public health is the director of the community program. So I can talk to Karen and that's where the grant needs to come from, but I think that money, I don't see it, so, you know. There's different places people look for money, like the, I'm very kind of people, talk to the local union labor office, or, you know, car guys. I don't know if they would be doing anything like that. I'll, I'll call Karen and ask her.
So is it, is it actually kill honeybees and stuff too? Somebody's got honeybee farm, can we, if they request that you not spray when you got by their house, is there any, we can work with that because I have had one concern about that.
Well, I do. Last year, I know we, oh, we shut it off before we got her out. After we got a patent for that drug.
They call it, I mean, in the country it's opt out, and I do appreciate that.
Can you do that effectively? Is that something we should eliminate while we're trying to?
Well, I mean, it's still dressed, but, you know, it's the 300 foot.
Well, you get to keep your mosquitoes out of this way.
No, I don't.
If they're on your property, it'll be all right.
Basically, it's not coming straight in my window because I'm like hitching the off the road.
Well, then, like I said, I had the email about the honeybees. I could understand that.
Yeah, that is a consideration.
You got bees and going on.
To address that, yes. If I was out right now, holding all my guys out running a fogger and the honeybees were flying through, they're toast. They're dead, they're done. That's why you do it in the evening, at dusk or dawn. Mosquitoes typically are more active during those times. Honeybees, butterflies, those sorts of things, pollinators, they're less active. They, you know, find their shelter and, you know, remember what they do. Hives, for example, if any of them get killed, it would be typically the first row or two just inside the hive at the door of the hive. Because the bat that's only access might get half a dozen or so to a hive that might not make it. But they're right at the edge. They have to actually go through this chemical and if it doesn't penetrate into the hive, they're not going to die. And by the time, by the time they go out, this stuff's long gone, hasn't been for hours, and so they're not going to die.
Okay.
But, yeah, if we fog during the wrong time of the day, it would kill them.
But they can opt out. There you go.
You bet.
That was, yeah, re-just as version, they can opt out if they want to. So we do have that option. I just wanted to address it because we did have the emails about it and I think it's fair to them. Bad honeybees, you know, it'd be a concern too. So, okay, well, that answered it all for me. Do we need to approve this or we, what kind of action are we wanting to do today?
I do have one question about this. Are we saying that we're not going to do a nuisance control at all? Or if somebody does call, you know, a municipality calls and is currently asking the parish picnic this weekend, you come out and do this, you know, your example there, are we saying that we're not going to do that kind of thing at all? Which is fine with me. I'm just, I just want to know if we're going to matter and if they're going to be, you know, driven by the CDC or the health department's information?
It's not a risk one, then how are we spraying? That's why I understand that's what this is about. We're saying.
This is not about nuisance, this is about honeybee.
I mean, at parish picnics, we can hand out.
Deed.
Deed.
Works for me.
Hey, we're getting bid by at the H V A home show this weekend. That's how much it warmed up the gas.
Yeah, I know, that too.
It was crazy.
Yeah.
There was one that picked one, so, yeah, and I was like, how appropriate is that? We got to talk about that on Tuesday.
And to recap too, spraying is ineffective. I mean, we're getting sprayed one night and the next night we have mosquitoes. So we didn't get relief.
Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to be able to make all of it.
Right, right, that's the thing.
That would be my idea.
I mean, it's good for a knockdown in the population, as the CDC said. If you want to knock a disease, you know, you got the disease, want to knock it down, sure. It doesn't resolve, mosquitoes, knock it down.
I think there's still some questions on what we're going to do, when. When is public works going to respond? Are they going to respond based on your instructions?
I think the policy, you know, if they get a complaint and they consult us and we've had cases in the area, so I guess it's going to be a collaborative effort. You know, they're not just going to go out and they get a complaint. We're going to look at the disease. We're going to see what's happened in that area in the past, if that's been a westbound prior to area in the past. We've got, you know, by where we had the equine case, we know that, you know, the mosquitoes in that area carry westbound and we're getting complaints, then, you know, we'll talk about it and we'll spray. Then on our website, we'll send out the alert texts and emails and whenever the weather is right, he'll go.
If we get a request from the municipality, we'll contact the city office and then consult with them and they can tell us.
And you get the complaint, are you getting a complaint from the city of Russellville? Or are you getting a complaint from John and Jane Doe saying, hey, I've got skeeters coming out of there?
No, they usually get those calls and then they'll call us.
And then they call us.
Fog.
So who makes that decision for them? Do they have to have it from the council?
From the city council.
So by the time they have a meeting, it's a month later, maybe.
I don't know how they're.
Do we want to create a policy maybe so we have something to establish guidelines and then we can send them out to the, to our communities?
Well, I think basically what.
Yes.
Okay.
So same way with unincorporated areas, do you guys get a lot of complaints from? Normally, we get any, the biggest area would be those state city areas. That's the biggest complaint driven area. I'm not sure how we want to handle that, other than have, have some type of report. If we get one in a subsequent, will you tell them that we'll come back out if we have to larva side out lately? Or it's been a while, we go back out and reapply the larva side if we don't fog.
The other thing that might be nice is if you gave us those people's name and address and they said, oh, it's okay, and we could send them out a packet of information about what they could do around their property.
Yeah, I think we need, once we get a complaint, we just send them straight to the health department anyway.
Can we just want to give health pest management?
Well, I think. Sheriff Scotty might get in with the trouble.
I was going to say, we can donate a truck and fogger to them too.
You need to tell them all that.
Hand it to drivers.
I need a, a rubber suitcase.
I think, to get back on serious line, I think once we, with this policy that's adopted, we'll contact the health department, say we've received a complaint. What do you think? We don't feel it's necessary because we're not hearing anything. What is yours? I mean, we'll either say we're going to go out for larva side out, you know, I know Mr. Wonder mentioned the ponds. You know, those are all on private property. We can't do anything with them. That's a plan.
Realize we get shot.
So we could get them some information.
Right.
We could, and we could send, you know, in the division, we could send some of the environmental factors, go out, look around and tell people, you know, clean up that pond or clean up.
I think we should work something together, but again, at some point, we need to adopt the policy so we get some of this staff, we'll hang our hats on and say that, you know, we can't come out and fog. There's no reason for it. There's no, you know, animal indication or there's no human, yeah, other disease, you know. We can, or larva side out, so.
Which we do that on a regular basis.
Okay. Hopefully we could something on our website too, on how to educate people to treat their own properties, you know, gutters, standing water, various places. Well, once this comes up, we can, I don't know whether it's for the health department side, we can link to, you know, requests or have it on both sides.
For both, I'll do it on both.
So I'll get that letter, send out, and then help the board, you guys figure problems.
I move we approve the integrated pest management policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And we'll continue to look at different methods and chemicals.
Be interested to see what Boulder, Colorado is shooting. Yeah, but really nice.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah. Jennifer, we're going to save you for last, but I think we're going to go to the printer page back. I want to get, want to get that back to work.
Good morning.
Great.
That's just a summary of what we did. I don't need any of this.
I don't need it.
I'll just move on with it.
Here's some pictures if anybody wants.
So that's the work. The top listing is the work that we completed. And the bottom listing is the work that needs to be completed yet and the kind of the schedule for completion. So we're looking at next Wednesday. I have the last system up and running, started up, so. And then after that, there'll be a little bit of training, but Jeff, you can really complete after that, so. I think we asked for a 30-day extension of that, which is.
I'd just do the whole 30 days now. If something comes up in that two weeks that you need, I don't know, even one more day, we don't have to come back and do this again. I think this is a waste of time. There's nothing in the contract that said a complete date or liquidated damages, so I think this is just kind of a exercise of utility or just a formality. I don't have any issues with it.
No, I think you, I had to talk to Mike yesterday. I think you've been very accommodating and it's kind of a, you know, you've got people living there 24 hours a day, so trying to do that work is.
Well, the time schedule.
Made it kind of difficult, yeah.
For us, it was, you know, do the job right and not inconvenience people. And the third object was to get it done and done. That was not the main.
I just want it done right the first time so we don't have to have you come back.
Right.
Like some of our other projects, I appreciate you. I think Michael said that you guys have been wonderful, so.
Really, because one of the issues that we were afraid of at the very beginning when we started this process was getting the system up, connect the boiler system where they're going to go down and they were all going to get a space heaters or whatever, but they were very accommodating where they got one side up and they maintained the second side along with our boiler. And when they actually got that up, they shut off the boiler and we had, we only had maybe three or four offices that did not have it, but the residential side and kitchen were all covered, so that was great.
So you think it'll be done around the first week of March?
Yeah, next Wednesday, we're planning the factory startup, the tech to come down from St. Louis. So Wednesday, all the remaining equipment should be started. I don't see any problems with it. And then I guess we still have a little training to do after that, so that'll be up to kind of great schedule for some of that.
There's only one area, because during the construction and implementation, we had a fiber optic cable cut. And CentriLink is coming out to replace that cable. And I believe your, one of your texts, contact your company.
So.
So that bill will be coming there, so we would like to at least, I told them to go ahead and contact CentriLink, get that fiber optic cable back and replace, so that it can all be done by the time it comes together.
Are you just going to forward me to fill that?
Uh, I would give it to the commission. The commission will do that. It will be.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, that's fine.
So we just need a motion to approve that change order.
This is the change orders for the extension. I move that we approve the change order number one for air systems for the Krieger H V A C improvements project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. The sooner you get it done, the sooner you get paid.
Okay, that's the way I look at it too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
You guys are doing a great job.
Okay, now we'll go back to Jennifer.
I get it. That's for last.
2016 dash 01, robe material.
Do you guys have the attachments?
What are we talking about? Sorry.
Robe materials.
Robe materials.
Yeah, we don't need any robe materials.
Are we skipping signing the.
Oh, we got, oh, that, yeah.
I mean, we, we can do Jen, but she's not gonna be assuming best for last now. Just make sure.
Yeah, let's go back to the sign of the yard and park agreement. Sorry about that.
Did they give us a presentation this year, what they're gonna use it for?
They sent a letter.
We're gonna do these bids, I don't, I'll just make sure you didn't forget none of it.
Uh, jumping around, I just thought, well, we could.
Wait, I can.
What are we doing, Sam?
Getting some bodies out of here.
Okay. Bit worse.
Okay, so we're on road materials?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we've got several bids for that, if you do over here, the regulations to the lowest bidder near the worksite with available material.
I move that we approve lowest and best and closest to worksite of available materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty sixteen dash oh two, blades.
Okay, got three bids on this, again, lowest and best in each category with available material.
You order these quite ways in advance, I assume, so, like Falk, their biggest drawback is they don't wanna deliver unless it's a tractor trailer load out.
You don't need those, that many?
No.
I move that we approve lowest and best as available materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty sixteen dash oh three, mosquito spray materials.
And no surprise, again, the lowest and best in each category with available material.
And are we still looking for other options into on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, we spray with garlic, the way he was talking, we'll have everybody wanting to get a thing.
To get what?
So does some of them alternatives, are they included in this list?
There are options.
What we bid like.
Okay.
So if we come up with something else we can bid into, I move that we approve lowest and best and available materials.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty sixteen dash oh four, vegetation spray materials.
And lastly, the lowest and best in each category with available material.
I move that we approve lowest and best as available materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What did we do on the blades, lowest, best and closest, or lowest and best in timeframe?
Which one?
For the blades? I guess we just signed on that.
What we do, if we can, if we were down to where we can order, we contact the lowest one and say if we need, you know, 40 blades, we'll call and ask them to go on, or the price is 40 blades for that, we're always contacted, lowest is always contacted first.
So they gotta meet how many we need and then how much timeframe, so do you call them? I mean, you have a break, you just need to go get it.
No, we try and order.
In three days or you know in two months?
Yeah, we try and order, we keep a standing supply of especially grater blades year round, so that's something that, you got some road monitors, you know, and each time you always look out to build, to get them ordered as early as possible, we don't wait to last minute, do we?
Well, I'm just getting at, we've got a local one supplying it, but there's quite a bit of price difference, and I like to use the locals, but there's 20% difference on these prices, so just trying to figure out.
But Larry said that Falk wanted to ship a tractor trailer load of blades, a lot of times if we order, you know, we've got different sizes, if we run down and we only need one size, six foot blade, you know, inch thick for the graders, you know, we'll call them and see if they'll be willing to deliver that, or if they got a shipment coming this way, you know, that's the other thing, maybe we'll split it, ship it out to somebody else, so.
A lot of times, a lot of times they wanna deliver a semi loaded blade, you know, they want a big load of grater blade and, and punch blade and snowball blade, far by a distance, you get a semi loaded blade, they do, but.
I understand that part, I was just asking if they, if we need one, if we know that it's over three months before we need it, or we're gonna order something to backfill the supply, then we can get that many, there's a lot of price difference in it rather than using a local.
Like the grater blades is most probably heavily used, we're able to put that pretty far out in front of folks, not snowball blades, you know, the different size, especially since we get different, many different plows in there, just getting them right side, we only made need, you know, half a dozen of them just for a couple of trucks, so, that was a nice thing, when we used to get our snowballs from Motot when they still made it, everything was the same, uh, here, here, they no longer manufacture their own snowballs.
Are they the same blades? Are they the same blades?
Cause for those.
I'm just letting you at the price difference, and I don't know, I'm disappointed that our local supplier can get to this at a closer price or a better price.
I'm sure there is a difference in quality, I mean, I don't, we've never really done a comparison between them, we haven't, I don't think you're probably looking at the same quality of blade, probably a little difference in them, that's probably why they're a little cheaper.
I don't know, I'm buying stuff too, so you get what you pay for, and that's what I'm wondering, are we buying blades that we're gonna replace sooner and not getting your mileage out of?
Well, it's a lot of experience, and no other, it depends on the road, what time of year it is.
Wouldn't that be worth maybe getting one from Fabic and trying them out side by side, would be able to compare?
We actually, we actually do get quite a few blades on there.
Is it worth the price difference?
I thought Falk and them, they wouldn't deliver it for you, but it's over 120 some days out on delivery, they says 30 to 45 on this thing, but they actually, 120 days on some of them, so we ended up buying some blades from Fabic while we were waiting for some of those to come in.
I don't have a problem, no, but what's the difference between the two of them? Are you gonna be able to tell me if you go get the generic car or tire or whatever and you get 30,000 miles out of it and you pay $10 more and you get 60,000 miles out of a brand name, local or whatever, is there, cause you can justify spending more up front if you're gonna get more out of it, is what I'm trying to get at.
I don't think we've ever run different brands.
We've never done a comparison.
And we've never put different blades on the same, uh, mow board.
I mean, I try to keep track of that, because it's lowest and best bid, if it's not the best blade, we're gonna get a lot more.
We tried to do it fairly easy on graders, I'm not sure how easy that would be on snowballs, because we never had an idea when they're gonna run out, and to be able to have one of each, I guess is the question, but we can definitely look and try to do that on a grater blade.
Well, if y'all are fine with the ones we get from Falk, I'm not gonna beat this one to the ground, I just, when we have somebody local that can get it, I always like to look at that and give them an opportunity in it.
We like the ones that's local too, because we don't have the stock, we can go and pick them up, and we don't have an inventory on our side.
We already voted on it anyway, I just, it's with everything, not just blades, so.
All right.
I'm done with it. Unless y'all got more you wanna beat me around? I was trying to find out a little more specific about it, when's it gonna be, where's it gonna be, what is it? AITP exhibition, anybody know anything about that? Nope? Me either. AITP.
I passed Siri.
I passed Siri. Never mind. AITP.
Well, aren't the party on this?
She got the, Burke's, Burke's name changed on.
Nice, they're gonna wear every bit of it.
Good morning.
I didn't even know if I was gonna send it back to her twice.
Is it warm? All right, watch, just air some water or something.
Page on here too.
I, I didn't hear, I don't remember if we talked to her about it, what they were doing this year, before she came and gave a presentation on the trucks, we've actually had yard and park, where it all started, by having the yard.
Have a place for you to sign.
No, it doesn't really, I don't have a site, it's form and register and.
I don't think they're gonna approve that.
I mean, I'd like to invite her to come, just a brief presentation, unless y'all know what they're doing with it.
No, I'd rather, I agree.
We've been giving to them from the beginning, I'm not.
Well, I'm still thinking, it's probably our last year.
All right, I'll, I'll come soon.
Yeah.
We just let Mark decide.
I think you're gonna have to statue it, we're gonna put you out in front of the.
As long as it's not a memorial. What's that called?
They're gonna cover, it's gonna be being.
Had to go Larry.
Covered everything, other issues, we've got Karen Platter's retirement in Russellville, March 3rd, 1:30 to 4:30, and invitations from Burnet County on March 10th, and I gave them their shirts sizes.
You ever figure out what's going on there, Sam?
We got an agenda sent, and you should've got it too.
Yeah, I mean, or it's a tour, but.
Yeah, basically, when we headed down at Lynn, we toured Missouri State Technical College, and then we, they had a little business meeting, and then they had lunch, and we adjourned about 1:00, so, it's, they kinda show you some of their plans and some of their major employers or something like that, it's, just down in Nevada.
That's a long way to go.
I can't make it, but you and Jeff, we're gonna go down.
I'm gonna try and get down and slam with stuff, so, it is a bad meeting with these guys sometimes, and getting to chat with them, some of the local ones, just like the breakout sessions when we went to first class counties, to talk with them, of course, there's a lot of difference there too, between what some want and what some don't. I think I still have this email too, Kristen left it, we're gonna talk to her about that painting. I think we'll talk to her about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If you want to, we need to add a digital to our, to the agenda. We discussed it previously, so it could be open business.
We're giving you a new roof and you want a painting.
We haven't given her a roof, yeah.
I'm trying to not put more lipstick on that pig, but we do need to keep it peeking, and then downstairs, I guess that we moved that, so we have a freezer or refrigerator in the clinic room where they give the immunizations, to keep the immunizations for a baby, full of tile on it, and little kids are like, oh, what's this style of it? So what's it do, mess with the temperature of our vaccine, not good, so we moved it out of that room, well, all the wires and everything were on the wall, so of course, we take that off, it's gonna make the paint really bad, so, Mike had mentioned to me the other day, he hadn't heard if, you know, paint needed, gotta approved in our budget, so like, if you get a little extra money, why not buy a gallon of paint, I'll do a room here and there when I have time, so I just thought, well, if it wasn't approved in the budget, I'll use some of my money to at least buy some paint for that clinic, the M's clinic room, and get it painted, but I mean, our lobby, it, it needs some work, it needs to be painted, it needs, it needs a lot, but.
It's gonna project more on the gallon. I'm fine with doing, I think it's a good idea, I don't have a problem with lipstick on the pig, just don't attract each other to dance.
That M's clinic room where we get.
Waste your time, it annoys a pig, Sam.
It's about.
Just so you know.
Six by six, just, it's a very small, if we just do that.
Oh, just in that real little.
I mean, if I buy, if we start small and I buy the paint, but I mean, the M's clinic room where they give immunization.
I don't have a problem getting a little at a time, trying to work on it. Gotta keep them busy too, if you've, you know, got some downtime.
Our lobby will take a lot more, we're gonna make it.
I got it in your budget, I think.
Yeah, I.
Or do we have a maintenance and paint budget, or do we take that out of the health budget?
Worried about 30 or 40 bucks.
Okay, so I can have him, I can go ahead and do that.
Yeah, if you don't have $35 short in your budget, let us know. However you want to do it, I mean, it's county money, boy, so.
We'll start there.
But don't tell LV, he'll probably paint it off his.
What's the window?
There he is. Oh.
Patient.
When are the windows coming first?
March 20th.
That's a quarter.
What do we do in the end?
Why don't we do in the end?
I don't know.
I don't know what the schedule is, I'll, I'll try to get a schedule.
We're gonna try to set up a meeting with Wilson Group and the orgs to kinda go over their schedules, we can do the same thing that you made with us too, so we have no timeline.
I think if they give us a schedule and they're gonna tentatively do everything, then they can jump around a little bit if they need to.
So, right, I don't think orgs, so they've got a major trial.
They did, are they?
Maybe.
Okay.
Half the time they get rescheduled or something, comes up with it, so, they don't need to be screaming about the sky is falling, let's just keep the project moving, and whenever they get to those windows, if there's something going on, do it, but then, it's just like eating an elephant, just take one bite at a time, so.
Pigs and elephants.
We can buy my truck and roll up windows and vinyl seats. I'll game cruise, throwback Thursday, Tuesday, throwback Tuesday.
Yeezy, Bobby.
It's more fun to mix up the analogies, it makes more sense, like, don't put the pig in front of the car or something.
Do you have roll up windows on your truck, or do you have power?
They're powered, I'm too lazy to reach across that, talk to somebody.
He has those H and Bs, as in the movie Bean.
I know, I saw it, another one coming after me.
You're saying everything but paying attention to the road, huh?
Do we have any other issues to come up for?
You notice, I've been trying to cut down on that kinda stuff, you know, doing stuff while you're driving, you know, when you try to break old habits, what happens? You gain weight, just the same thing happens, driving around, eating my celery and peanut butter. Oh, yeah, that's awesome.
Did you get rid of the typical trailer?
No, it's still on there, oughta go look, somebody's probably listening to take care of that today.
Correct.
Had a couple empty gas.
Or they wanted to put something on our buildings?
Yes, they are wanting to, gentlemen stopped by the other day, and they thought healthy snacks, we can design the snacks, they're willing to put a machine in our building, I'm just asking for permission for the SOTA committee to look into this, I mean, before we've tried to get machines in here, they'll take them out right away because there's really not much volume of sales going on. This gentleman assured me that they would leave the machine here, but again, usually the SOTA committee has been the leader of the machines that we have in the buildings, and we also, that committee uses that money for our Christmas party, it's not anything, they did say there was a commission that, you know, they charged depending on what kinda rate we wanted to put on the food that was in there, and then, this is all high tech, that they can zoom down on this machine and know that such and such is expired, or that such and such needs to be replaced, they don't come check it, they have some kinda app that they can pour it into this machine and figure out what they need to come in.
So it's no cost to us, it's free, do we make any?
The SOTA committee, it's the group, and whatever commission is brought off those machines goes into that account, which then is for the Christmas party. You know, we do give flowers to employees that are in the hospital.
We don't have a SOTA machine at Health, it was taken out because we needed the server and I broke the server, including the sort of, you know, the people at my office that not, not, you know, want to do that, but it's like the management, anyway, but I could see like my employees enjoying this, I don't know if we would still put it down in the lobby though, just because I don't want the, the front desk staff to deal with the trash. building to get it.
And that was, that's the only thing that we did back, since they are your buildings, is the trash that would happen, may or may not. You know, even in the courthouse, we don't let them bring stuff upstairs. They're not allowed to bring sodas upstairs or food upstairs because of the mess they would leave in the hallway of the court.
The general public is not allowed to...
Yes.
Okay.
So this is, this is more for our employees.
They technically want it somewhere where the public can get to it, too. Because the more you sell, the more you...
At courthouse, we don't allow it. So you put it in a break room. Down here, we have, it's got public access.
And I was thinking, maybe we could try it in one of our buildings.
The department could put it in their break room.
We have a kitchen.
It's put in there.
It's bigger than mine.
I know, yeah, I was talking about, it's smaller, but then making my office a workout room. I don't know, if they would, if the fire department let me put it in the stairwell at the top or not. That would be a great place for it, but I don't know if they will allow us to put things in the stairwell.
Well, I'm all for putting it in here to promote the healthy workplace, because we've been trying to do this, the healthy stuff. This isn't going to cost the same thing. Who else is going to want to put one of these in though?
Well, I would like, I would like you to let the committee, I just want permission from you guys to put this in our buildings if the committee decides that's where they want it.
If they want to look at it and bring us the recommendation, we'll be willing to consider it.
Okay.
I don't think it's a bad thing. I think a lot of questions right now. So, and I'm fine with somebody else. They won't look into it unless we want to look into it in the commission, but I really don't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it. I don't care if it's in a public place. I don't think traction is going to be an issue, but anyway.
If the electricity they use is minimum anymore, that would be the only...
I want the equal opportunity to find somebody bringing unhelpful food machines.
Well, what we can do is mix some of these drinks with my bourbon. Can we have cocktails?
This second drawer right there, you probably got snacks. Got Snickers, a couple quarters with cheese.
I'm surprised, because these machines are very expensive, that they place it. He assured me in that they would do that.
I mean, I don't look at it. There's all kinds of health stuff out there now. They want to throw their face in the wash. But there was that twenty-one day challenge or whatever. I eat that like for three days. Still going. I didn't see what was so hard about that. Yeah, because I stay away from acknowledging.
Once you leave the building and go get something to eat, you're not probably going to get something healthy.
Even the water, you know, our offices are enough of a gas station to make it hot.
I think Colson's, my part is probably our number one snack.
Does it have drinks in the dude? Is there any conflict with the soda companies that have machines with food in it? Do they have water? No watering?
We'll have to figure it out.
Yeah.
No, I mean, watering...
Push it on to the summit committee. Are you on there?
And you could just type.
There you go.
Am I asking?
Well, you can ask that later.
We're on the committee, aren't we?
Push it off, push it off.
I'm not going to mess with it.
I mean, we don't really have set contracts.
I'm looking at it to help promote health in the workplace. I don't want to commercialize at courthouse. Right, this is something we can do. It helps, and it helps the summit committee and our Christmas party. Good for us.
Okay, I just want to make sure you're okay with us talking about that, bringing it back.
Yeah, I mean, we talked to them.
Not bad.
That hurt.
They can, they'll bring the recommendation back.
Correct.
Anything else? We did ask Ralph, he's going to help us with our United Way campaign. He's going to come up with something really fantastic.
Pressure's on.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's we? There's one, there's one to clarify.
We're sort of, we're having the idea of whether or not Jeff wants to get tased or something.
I don't think we...
We better brace and duck that, though.
I don't.
Because there's going to be some work coming out of my mouth.
I don't think that's...
I'd love to do it.
Better have the project monitor ready to go.
No, my ticker's a good ticker.
Maybe you could rappel.
I would rather be tased than to rappel off of a building. A hayhigh. Hay. I don't even, might be an addict.
We need something good that's going to get a letter to the editor again.
I don't care. But I ever not done something, I don't worry about a letter to the editor. No, but if we get tased, we got to raise a whole lot of money for that one. Because if somebody's going to see me pee my pants, this got to be worth it. We can auction it off, because the first area of W X wives, I'd raise the bidding pretty high.
Who gets to pull the trigger?
Yeah. Hangover?
In the head.
I'm going to dig out that buddy. That wasn't even real. All right, I'm sorry. You better get control of it.
Is there anything else?
What else do I got?
Oh, shit.
The oil, Lynn, Luther Hens did pursue the thing.
Oh.
Did he send that to somebody else? Did she get that information for, is there a sunshine thing, or do we need to forward an email to Jill? Did you send it to Jill, or have we?
I didn't. I said he was going to ask somebody else if he was, I think it was a question.
So we need to send it to the bar or Jill? Or do I need to forward it to Jill? So who do we need to send this to?
Bar.
Okay.
Maybe they barged that.
How far did Jill then? Just lost word of flying. I think that one is, I'm just trying to get some polling.
Motion to reset.
I'll move to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pigs and...
Pigs and blankets. Oh, wait, that's a good question.
They've lost these.